All right, we have our September first zoning board of appeals meeting. And I'll take the role. Paul Reisler.
Yes.
John Veronica.
Here.
Justin Ballway.
Here.
Mangus.
Here.
Mark Wolford.
Here.
So that means we have five present. Is anybody planning to abstain on any of the items tonight?
No.
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 That means Dave Schultz, we thank you for joining us. You are welcome to stay as always, but you are also excused if you wish to be.
Okay, I'll probably be excused if that's all right.
Perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
I know.
Appreciate your flexibility.
Sure.
All right, at this time, we'd like to call the zoning board of appeals to order at this time. Has everyone received the meeting minutes from last, the last meeting and have you had an opportunity to review it? And do you have any changes? I've read through it. I don't have any comments.
I'll be honest, I haven't read through it. If you want to screen up a little bit on it, Daphne. Thank you. Okay. Is there a page two? Yeah. All right, looks good to me. I apologize for not reading it.
No, that's fine. Sorry, I didn't get them to you sooner.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so Mark, Mark moved to accept, and I think John seconded. All in, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries to approve the minutes from last zoning board meeting. Mark or Daphne, are there any other items that you need to cover this evening?
No, we have the two items before you on.
Okay.
On the agenda, that's.
Then Mark or Daphne, would you please just review the two items on the agenda for this evening?
Sure. We have twenty twenty seven, twenty two, twenty, let me start again. We have twenty seven Middleton Beach Road variance for maximum height of a detached garage. And then the other item is thirty fifteen Wakonya Lane. Graces in the minimum setbacks for side and rear lot lines. So those are the two items on the agenda. I can proceed with the first one if you'd like, Paul.
Well, before we do that, if there's other individuals from the public that would wish to speak tonight, you will have an opportunity to do that after the applicant presents their variance request. So at this time, I would like to open the public portion of the meeting at five oh four. And then Mark, if you could please, or Daphne, read the application for the first agenda item, please.
Sure. The owner, Russell Khan, requests a zoning variance to construct a two-car detached garage measuring approximately twenty feet by twenty-six feet with a second level. Used for storage and home office. The height to the top of the flat roof would be twenty-four feet. Section ten point two two four G limits a detached garage on this R1 zone lot to a height of fifteen feet.
Okay, thank you.
No correspondence regarding this matter, separate from anything that was included in the packet, which I don't think.
And no other city comments or site inspection information. All right. If there is someone in attendance tonight that would like to speak on behalf of this application, please state your name and you can proceed.
Hi, I'm Russell Khan, and I'm requesting this variance. I think it's, you know, the application is pretty straightforward. I'd like to have a home office on top of our two-car garage that we're hoping to build. We've all. Something modern and hopefully something that everybody in the neighborhood would like, but certainly my neighbors have commented that they thought it was a positive exterior. The reason is to have a quiet space for a home office in a place away from the house where it's often noisy. The lot, we didn't know at the time when we bought it, but the lot has a lot of limitations. We do have about a two-foot, you know, deep water level and we have the sewer line which prevents twenty feet of building on that. And then we have a narrow lot as well, so. So we've designed it the best we could. We tried to add everything that we thought we, we do need. And so the extra height of nine feet would give us the space that we, we request. In addition, our neighbor, our neighbor garages are similar in that the one on the left is a detached garage, a single garage, which is about fifteen feet high. And then the one on our right, which has just been built, is about, I think, thirty-five feet high at the top of the gables or at the top of the peak. So ours would kind of be snug right in between. It would be set back from the road a little bit more so than the garage on the left. And a little bit less so than the garage on the right. I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
You see the site plan, Daphne? Thank you. So Russell, do you have a? Whoa.
One more time?
Is the house already on the lot?
Um, no, we still have the original cottage house on the lot.
All right, so you're going to be building, you're going to be building the house and the, and the detached garage?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And there is a garage plan for the house part of the, of the, the new project.
Correct.
Okay. So basically you're putting two buildings on the same lot, if I'm looking at that right?
Um, yeah, one's the main house and one's a detached garage with an office above it.
What's the separation between these two buildings?
Um, it's approximately twenty feet, according, ten feet on each side of the sewer line.
It's gotta be more than that because the sewer line looks like it's a twenty-foot easement.
Right. The dimensions on the site plan, Daphne, can you blow that up a little bit?
It looks like twenty-six feet to me.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay.
Okay, thirty-six. Sorry, I didn't realize it was that big.
And, um, Mark Opitz, it looks like there's a lot of pavement, but because it's a driveway that doesn't go against the permeable surface.
Yeah, this is one of those.
Yeah.
You know, this is kind of an unusual situation. It's, you know, I could almost call it a loophole, if you will. Usually we only count against, we, we, we don't apply driveway against lot coverage that connects to a garage. We don't consider that part of lot coverage. In this case, there's obviously two, two garages. So it frankly, I was a bit uneasy about this one, but we don't have any rules that say where the garage has to be on the lot. Anything that's the driveway connecting to the garage is, is not counted as lot coverage, so. So I would make the interpretation that this is, that the driveway extending to the second, to the, to the eastern garages is not counted against lot coverage.
I guess my, my biggest question is, the detached garage has a garage and then living space above it, which you say you need. And yet you have a garage attached to the main building, which could actually be the living space you need. In other words, are you, is this done this way because you require four, four garage stalls?
Um, I'm not sure I get the question exactly, but the variance is requesting the height of the garage to be more than fifteen feet. I already am entitled to a four-car garage if I would like. So I'm not sure what your question is exactly.
I guess the question is, the, the purpose, it's so tall and you're asking for the variance is because you're saying you need more living space.
Well, it's not exactly living space, it's office space, so sleeping space. Also storage space because we do have a lack of storage because, because we can't really have full basement because of the water lot level.
Is there any plumbing on that second floor of the proposed garage that you're asking the variance for?
Yes, we're planning on having some plumbing for the office.
Okay, Mark, if there is.
How many rooms will be above the garage?
Uh, one main room.
Um, Mark, since that is, there is plumbing up there, I mean, do we run into, is this considered a granny flat? Two single-family residences?
I'd be concerned about that as well. I share that concern. Our ordinance does not currently allow that. I also would question the statement entitled to a four-car garage. I don't know where one has that entitlement.
No, I'm just saying that we could have a garage within the house and then a detached garage. And I'm just, I don't know why it would be prohibited.
But would you be entitled to a six-car garage on the lot too? I mean, it's.
I, I think if it was lot coverage, yes. I mean, if I was within my right of lot coverage of the thirty-five percent, if I wanted to have a ten-car garage in a hundred-square-foot room, maybe, I'm not sure.
I'm concerned about the plumbing aspect of it. Uh, Paul, as you, or I think Paul, you were the one who asked me that.
Yes, I am. That could be construed a granny flat.
Yeah.
How many, how many square feet are we talking about above that garage? Am I seeing eight hundred square feet?
I believe it's in the five hundred range.
It says eight fifty-five on.
It says eight fifty-five.
Well, then I guess, right, it's eight fifty-five.
Basically, it's going to cover the entire area of the garage on the bottom, correct?
Yes, correct.
Well, I believe the, the eight fifty-five is elevation. I don't think it's the.
Yeah, that is elevation, you're right. I'm sorry. It's twenty by twenty-five approximately, so it's about five hundred square feet.
Right.
Proportionally, it looks like it's longer than twenty-five.
It's about twenty-five. I'm, I'm sure that it is.
Can you zoom, zoom in, Daphne, please?
Might be twenty-six.
Why is that to mention that given?
I don't know. I'm not sure. Beyond another.
Well, I don't know if that's our concern. And, and Mark Opitz, I don't know if it's our concern as to whether it's a granny flat or not, that's, would be up to the building department.
Right, I'm just saying from a zoning standpoint, we look for indications that something could be used to certain way. And if it has a fully, you know, does completely self-sufficient, that would be against the regulation, the zoning regulations. We would not allow, for example, a full, a kitchen or, you know, we, we look for, there are various ways when, when assesses whether something is, is a standalone dwelling unit or not. Plumbing is one of those indicators.
Yeah.
Okay.
It might be allowed to have water there, but not a toilet. Is the bathroom going to be a full bathroom or is it just going to be a toilet and a, and a sink, like a?
Um, we're hoping, we're hoping for a full bathroom, so we can use it as a full office and use it as we would like. So we wouldn't have to go back in the house if we didn't need to. Okay, if you have a full day at the office, you would pretty much have what you need there.
Well, I think the question is, is it going to have a bath or a shower?
Um, we are not sure about that yet. We're still working with the builder to kind of see what the costs are going to be of things. I mean, it might just be an empty room for storage. We, we haven't come down to what the costs are going to be, so we're not exactly sure what we're going to put above there, but we would like it for it to be an office and for storage.
So regarding the height, Mark, could you just remind me, you know, if it's where a gable, a gable-ended building, we take the midpoint of the gable? And what are our height restrictions?
Um, if the midpoint of a gable would be fifteen feet above the ground level at the front of the structure.
Okay, so that would still, that still creates that datum that he's reaching, okay?
Yeah.
Well, I, I agree with Russell that he can put as many garage stalls as he wants. But if he's looking for a hardship and he's saying, well, maybe we shouldn't be discussing that at this point. Let's wait till we close the meeting.
Close the hearing, you mean?
Yeah, the hearing, yeah. The public hearing.
Well, if you look at several of the houses on our street, you would notice that they're designed in a similar way. There's a house with a single car detached with two cars inside. There's a new house down the street with a detached two-car and two inside. And, you know, each one of those is very similar in many ways. My neighbor put a bridge between his house and he has a very large what I would call a detached two-car with a two-bedroom apartment above it. Um, or three, I'm sorry, a three, three-car detached with a two-bedroom apartment above it, in addition to his main house structure. And I know there's another house going up down the street that also is going to have a bridge and a detached garage with an apartment above it. So I think that our street over time has had, you know, various interpretations of the zoning. And people have, you know, been able to build more or less what has been, been necessary for them.
Can we see the elevations again, please, Daphne? So flat roof and the height is what, at the top of the flat roof?
Twenty-four feet.
Before feet.
Hmm. That gives us space inside the garage for a boat, so the interior of the garage would be twelve-foot height.
So even if you had.
We, have we had any other requests for variance raising the height of, of the building? My recollection is, is we had one. And it wasn't looked upon favorably. Maybe I'm wrong.
So we have had, as the applicant has noted, there's some structures on the street where there's a connection, a walkway connection. Yeah, we, our ordinance is written that then is not a detached garage.
Okay.
That, that is a, you know, part of the structure of the house. So that's how. Oh, okay, I'm in a meeting, sorry. Um, custodial staff. So we, we have, so, so that's how they've, they've.
Got around it.
Yeah, exactly. And that's not just a Middleton Beach Road that's happened. There are a couple, we have had a couple requests. Each one is considered on its own merits, that what, doesn't create a precedent for another applicant necessarily. You have to consider each case, each variance request on a case-by-case hardship basis. I'll leave it at that.
We did consider putting a bridge in, in our original design, Hattie Bridge, going from the house to the garage. And I believe within the zoning, that would allow us to do what we have requested here. But because I think that looking at my neighbor's bridge, it's not as aesthetically attractive and it does block light and it has other complications. I think for my neighbors, it would be better for them if we didn't have a bridge. And so that is, that was really the impetus for our variance is because we didn't want to have the bridge and the complications and expense and, and things that come along with it. And our neighbors agreed and were appreciative of us applying for the variance and that's pretty much why, why we did.
Quick, quick question. Um, how, how tall is your garage door?
Uh, it's a standard height. I, I, I'm not sure. We haven't purchased.
So like an eight, eight-foot height, probably?
I think it'll be.
They usually aren't even that tall.
I think it'll be a prob, I'm honestly, I'm not sure. I can't say. I mean, it's.
Eighty inches is pretty standard.
It'll be standard.
Okay. And the reason I'm, I'm asking is you said the, the garage height is twelve feet?
On the interior.
Um, on the interior, so your boat will fit through a standard-sized garage door? Is it, do you need to do something inside that will like expand it or?
Um, I, I just think if we want to work on top of it and get inside the boat and, and that sort of thing, it would be helpful for that.
Okay. I mean, I see, I see, it looks like it lines up with the floor line of the, the main house and I can appreciate that. I.
Yes.
I was just wondering, uh.
Sure.
The twelve-foot high when you only have a standard-sized garage door. That was, that was my only question.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's like most garage doors, it's eight feet tall. And you'd have four feet above it, that'd give you the, to where the cantilever is. That would be the floor joists of the second floor. Yeah, we, you know, obviously Middleton Beach Road has a lot of situations like this. We've granted a lot of variances.
Yep.
But the, but the majority of them have been gabled. And, you know, not blocking quite as much as, as this, this does, but I think because, I don't know, we'll, we'll wait till we have a discussion.
Sure.
The roof actually, it's not going to be flat. It's probably going to be, um, is it pitched? No, sorry, it's, um, can't think of the word now.
It's a sloped.
It'll be a metal sloped roof, yeah.
Okay.
It looks like you probably have designs completed for both the new house and this garage with living space above it. But we don't see those in the packet.
Yeah, we're still working on those and we're still working with the builder and the architect.
Because I thought, when I first read the application, I was believing that the upper level of the new garage was going to be for a storage function. It looks like it's much more than that. I'm still trying to warm up to it.
Okay.
Is there, um, so your, your variance request is requesting a certain height? And I'm hearing that the roof might change from a flat roof to a, to a pitch roof, which would then raise the height of it?
No, that's not true.
No.
Okay, that's not what I meant. No, it will appear flat on the outside.
Okay. So, so there's no concern that if, if we were to approve the, the height requested, that it would, it would change in design to be higher than that?
No, no, we are not concerned about that.
And if I may speak to that, the way you approve variances oftentimes is to state that it's, the variance is approved to build the structure as shown in the packet. You know, shown in the materials, that, that would be the way you'd want to go about it.
Oh, well, that's interesting. That's interesting because the elevation to me looks like a flat roof. If you, I mean, it doesn't change the, the heights above the windows, does not change. So unless the windows are sloped also.
Are you, are you suggesting, when you said slanted, did you mean just a tapered, so it's a flat tapered roof?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm wondering, Mark, it's just going to be a rubber, you know, tapered roof to, I'm assuming, is there, is the water sloped out towards the edge, so it just falls off the building or is there an interior, internal, okay?
Yes.
Mark, I have a question. If, if this was approved and they decided at some point in time, because it's going to have a full bathroom there, that they wanted to convert that to an apartment, would that be permissible without getting any more approvals from the city?
That would be a violation of our current zoning ordinance.
It would be.
Yeah.
But it could happen.
Is any plumbing at all allowed in the, in an area above a garage?
I, I would want to confer with the building inspector about his comfort level with that. I, again, we look at various clues to indicate whether a building might be used as a dwelling unit or not. So it's, it's, um, you know, I, I reserve judgment on that. I would discourage it. I would advise the inspector to discourage. And I would say to the applicant that, you know, we are currently overhauling our zoning ordinance and we are, as a community, going to be discussing accessory dwelling units on, on lots. And so, you know, a year from now, we will know, less than a year from now, frankly, we will have a good idea of, of to what degree the, the community has comfort in updating its zoning ordinance. We will have updated our zoning ordinance hopefully by now, a year from now. So we will know whether a place like this would be an appropriate place for an accessory detached dwelling unit. So if that, if this were to be approved but not yet constructed, well, that's a whole nother issue. If you approve it for the, the purpose of storage space and then eventually the, the rule changes to allow a different use, you know, I guess, obviously you, you abide by the current, the updated zoning regulation unless something's grandfathered in. In this case, when the heights, it's already there, if the building were there with the height. So the structure is there, but the use is changing to something that's allowed, you know, that's, that would be permissible to, to change it. But to build an anticipation of a change or hopeful, hoped-for change, you know, that's a risk that the, that the builder, that the applicant is taking. And we wouldn't allow a full build-out for an accessory dwelling.
That's, that was the question that I really was trying to get to when I asked about, have we had any similar situations with height restrictions? Because I do have a recollection that someone came before the board and wanted, and was asking for a height variance. And their intent was, well, they raised the question about whether or not that the, there would be a change, okay, allowing apartments. And I remember, my recollection is, is that we didn't approve it.
Your recollection was what? I'm sorry?
That we didn't approve it.
That's, that's my recollection as well. You're correct that we have had that request and my recollection is that that was not approved.
Right.
But he's not asking for that in this case. He's, he's stating it's for a storage and for office space. But as I mentioned, we have had other incidents, other examples in the city over the years where if we have discovered or, or see evidence that a additional dwelling unit is being installed, we have, you know, we have denied, excuse me, we have denied that type of additional construction within the building.
Yeah, my, I guess my concern is, is that he, he's going to be putting in a full bathroom. Uh, and it's a very large office space. And we don't really have a lot of detail as to the division of that space above the garage, other than the fact that we're seeing square footage. And he's saying, okay, that he wants to have a, a full bathroom, but we're not seeing any, we're not seeing how that space is going to be divided. So basically where, we would be approving a box. And that's basically all we can do. We're not, we're not, it's not in our jurisdiction to say what's going in there. Unless it has something to do with the hardship. You know, he can put anything he wants in there, as long as it's, follows the code. And Mark Opitz is saying that the code does not allow for a bath up there. Um. Doesn't allow for a bath. Right, does not allow for baths. Now that's, that doesn't mean that, that Russell couldn't, like, rough plum tie into the sewer line or something and run water. Tie into the sewer line or something and run water. You know, you can, I'm sure you can have a water hose bib on the back of the garage. But, you know, our job is more to look at the structure itself.
And, and the basis for, for granting the variance, the hardship is linked to the use as well. You know, in this case, I mean, you asked the question earlier, why couldn't the, why couldn't the, this use be where the exist, where the garage is in the, in the. In the main resident, you know, in the, in the residence itself. Um, you know, that, that was, that's an interesting way to look at it. Uh, the applicant's response was he needs to have four garage stalls. Um, and that's why there's some room in that structure to, to have a, an office. So, you know.
I, I wonder if we're getting into debate, if we have any other questions for the applicant, we could close the public portion and debate as a board, as a.
Well, as a board. Before we do close it, um. In other applications that we've seen, we've seen building floor plans as part of the demonstration of the hardship. It looks like in this case. That information is absent and so we really don't know anything about. Why there's this need for this full height wall to wall second story on top of a garage.
That's something you could ask for. Sure.
Okay.
Is there anything, Mark, in the, you know, in the requirements of what type of drawings need to be? Um, given. By the applicant?
Um, there's guidance in our zoning ordinance on, um. I'll just review it with you quickly.
Well, while you're looking up, I'll just say that you've already brought up an interesting. Situation and that is that if we approve this, it would have to be built exactly as shown. And if this is a preliminary. And any changes are made. Our approval would be null and void. So is this, is this plan far enough along to actually be addressing? Is my question? I don't think it is.
Well, I think, you know, I think the point was made that you, you're in a hearing right now and, uh, should allow the public to speak. I'd forgotten that you're still in the hearing, to be honest. Otherwise, I would have given you that same guidance a long time ago.
Right. Um, that's why I was asking the question. So I think at this point. If we don't have any other questions directly for the applicant, are there any other, uh, people on the call that would like to speak? Um, behalf of this variance? If there is not, what I would like to do at this point is to. Close the public portion of the hearing at five thirty-three and we can continue to discuss as a, as a board.
Well, it's just, it's like I was saying, I, I'm a little concerned that this plan is not far enough along. And, and, and to try to, to guard Russell. From further problems, you know, I would hate to have this plan change in any way. Uh, and therefore make our decision. Null.
I do not plan on changing the, the plan, to be honest with you, if I'm still on. Uh, our plan we've developed, we expect the exterior to be just like you see it. Uh, I do not plan on changing it. We would accept that if we do change it, that your variance would be null and void. That would be okay with us. And I did, I did ask my neighbor Brad, my, my neighbor Brad. Dussler asked if he should be on the call and I said he probably didn't need to. I didn't, didn't want to waste his time and he's, he had some health issues, so. I know he's in favor of us, uh, doing the plan that we've presented to you. So.
Mark, is it acceptable to have the applicant, uh, still providing input while we've closed the public?
Unless recognized by the board was a question.
Okay. I think to that end, I do kind of agree with, uh, you know, what Mark and, and others have pointed out that there is. I understand, you know, we are charged with, you know, ruling on the, the ask for the variance, you know, request for the height. But I would agree, there's not a lot of information here and. You know, also with Mark's, uh, you know, comment about speaking with the building inspector, just to really kind of try and find out what. Is allowable with plumbing and water service to these type of outbuildings, if you will. Um, you know, that's something we'd need to take into consideration as well.
And just to kind of add on into the question I had for you, Mark, before. If it's not clearly stated on what the applicant should provide, if it. In future cases, I think to mitigate this type of, um. Instance, it would be helpful to, to ask for. So right now we basically have a three D sketchup model and a site plan. It would be beneficial to have floor plans, sections if applicable. And I think in height, um, height variance request a section would be applicable. You know, before the meetings happen, so applicants don't have to come back a second or third time, if it's not clearly stated already.
Can we readdress the hardship that's stated? Sure. Do you have that?
Mark, who are you talking to?
You wanted to read the hardship or the application?
I just wanted to read the hardship, so I was talking to Daphne and she, she pulled it up here.
Yeah, I think they mentioned, uh, he mentions a sewer line cuts across that, you know, limits the amount of billable area.
Right. And that's pretty common, you know, the, the lots are substandard width. We do have the sewer growing through a lot of them. However.
High water line.
Right. Lack of storage, um.
Yep. However, where I have the problem is with the four car garage. And if you have room for three vehicles and a boat. You know, is that the hard, is that a hardship?
I don't know, Mark. I struggle with that myself.
I, I think the floor plans are key to understanding why there's a hardship here.
I agree.
So is this something, Mark, where we could, uh, potentially defer this until we receive more information from the applicant and they wouldn't have to reapply?
Yes, that's perfectly, if you, if you need more information to make a decision, that, that is perfectly within your right to, uh. Request additional information. You did that obviously for the Porters Beach.
Correct.
Applicant recently, so.
I think at this, you know, you know, unless there's other discussion from others, you know, uh, on the board, I would recommend, uh. Deferring until a later time, until the applicant, uh, would have time to bring the design a little bit further along. Provide a little bit more information, uh, sections as we indicated before, and then provide that information. We can make a ruling.
So to be clear, we're talking about a final site plan. Floor plans, section through the addition with the office storage space of it. With heights indicated.
Yes, that's a good point, Bob. Yes.
Especially the elevations, because, uh, you know, even though he says it's going to be a sloped ceiling or sloped roof. You know, the, to me, the elevations don't really show that. They show it's drawn to a, to a vanishing point. Which makes it, makes it look that way, but it's, that to me is a flat all the way around, flat roof.
Yeah, it's a flat roof.
Right.
So, yeah, so a little more information. I agree, um.
You know, into the applicant, you, we're not, uh, we're not saying no, uh, we just need, uh, some more information before we can make a, a ruling.
Exactly, exactly.
And I think that section will definitely help out, um, with really making sure that you get that height. Correct in your request.
And I'm, I'm thinking that that second floor layout for that shell space, it's going to be storage slash open office. Would have the bathroom showing. To be clear that it's not a shower and.
Right.
Usable, usable as a, an apartment.
Right. And that would give Mark some time to, uh, uh, meet with the, ask the building inspector their, their interpretation of that as well. So is there, do we have a motion on deferring, uh, this application?
Yeah, one more thing. Let me clarify this with Mark Opitz. If there were to be a walkway between the, the proposed house and this garage. Then the bath would be allowed, correct? Because it would be considered part of the house?
Yes.
Okay. That's just something to keep in mind, Russell.
Mm-hmm.
As another, as another way to go about it. And I, I don't know, you've explained why you didn't want to do it, so. We, we understand that also.
Yes, I understand your question, but, or your comment, but by denying the request, you're basically forcing me to build a bridge. So that I can have what I want, if I still want that.
We, we haven't denied your request. We're just asking for more information because as been commented on before. We're being asked to take a look at a sketchup or a three D massing, uh, without any accompanying drawings that really lets us know how high that is. Um, so it's difficult for us to make that.
It's twenty-four feet high, though.
I understand that, but the drawings hope to record that.
Well, we're doing, the roof will be a hip roof. It'll be metal. But you won't be able to see it because from the street level, so it will look flat.
All can, all we can approve is the, is the information you show us.
Right.
So you can describe it any way you want, but we have to actually see it to approve it.
Exactly.
I understand.
Okay.
So do we have a motion from the board, um, to defer this until a later time to give the applicant some time to accumulate more information for us?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have?
Who made the motion?
John.
Okay.
Can, can we just make sure to include like, pretty specifically, you know, what we want to see? So that we don't run into a situation where. We don't get everything we want and have to do this again. Just, just making sure that that's in our, in the record that we. We want to see floor plans of both the, the ground floor and the, the second story for the, um, detached garage. The, the floor plans for the house and then, uh, a section cutting through. The detached garage and. Antlers stays above. And sho- sho- showing dimensions with heights and, um. And widths were applicable.
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who was the second besides John?
I do, or I will.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion carries to defer this until a later time. Uh, thanks, thanks for your time, Russell.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, okay, on to the second item on our agenda. Uh, Mark or Daphne, could you please, uh, review what that request is?
Sure. This is for, um, thirty fifteen Waconia Lane. variance for the minimum setback from side and rear lot line. The owner Denise O'Hara, who's present tonight. Requests a zoning variance to construct a two-story addition and covered patio in the rear yard. The addition will be setback five feet from both side lot lines, measured to the overhangs. The addition will be seven feet from the south lot line, seven feet, eight inches from the north lot line, measured to the walls. It will also be twenty-three feet from the rear lot line, measures the overhang or twenty-four feet, measured to the walls. Our ordinance requires, uh, on this lot, narrow R1's own lot to have a side setback of six feet, four inches. And, uh, minimum rear setback of thirty feet.
Uh, thank you. Um, is there any other, uh, city or inspection information you'd like to share, Mark?
No, I, I don't have any other comments.
Okay. Uh, at this point, if there's a representative to speak on behalf of this application, please state your name and you can present your bearings.
Hello, uh, my name is Ed Linville. I'm the architect working with the owner Denise. Of course, she's also. Here, uh, for any comment or information she would like to share. So we started working together, uh, it's been a few months back. Uh, first, first request I had, uh, was to get a survey because of what we're. What we're talking about tonight, uh, and she complied and, and, uh, we got that very quickly. Um, once we had that set up, then, uh, uh, we started to do, uh, a design that was suitable for. Kind of a, uh, her life is becoming more multi-generational, uh, as far as for longer periods of, uh. Of, uh, related family, uh, you know, being in her, uh, in her home. When she originally had purchased it, it was a two-bedroom, uh, and, you know, accommodated, uh. The re- the requirements of that, of her life at that's, at that point. Uh, and one of the things we have is a, the house is actually set back deeper onto the lot than the front. Uh, uh, setback would allow, uh, and it's kind of, kind of good in a way because. Uh, even though it's, it creates a hindrance for, uh, doing a rear without, uh, career, uh, addition without, uh. Having some variance, uh, it, if, if you know that lane at all, uh, the house being set back, uh, helps. The, the, the rest of the neighborhood also to continue to have a, have a, a lake. Uh, you know, a, a glimpse of the lake, so, um, you know, we're, we're, uh. In respect of that. So that's one of the reasons we didn't need front set. So basically, uh, what we're requesting. Is, is a, a two-story addition, which would allow a bit more living space, not a separate room, but more living space in the. In the living room to accommodate to more people, grandkids, et cetera. And, uh, then accordingly, an outdoor space that would have a shelter roof over it, open though. Open porch, no walls, you know, especially the younger folks to play outside and, under different, uh, weather conditions. Um, so that's our, that's our basic, um, uh, purpose. We're, uh, proportionally, we're looking at, at something.
Sorry, you're, you're breaking up.
Yeah, Ed, Ed, can you get to a location if you're on your cell phone?
It doesn't overpower.
Ed, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, this is Mark Opitz. Could you please find a location where you have a better signal? Because we have missed some of your testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, I'll see if I can go out towards the front here. Um, hang in there with me.
And then rewind about thirty seconds.
Okay. Am I coming across better?
Yeah.
Yes, you are.
Good, okay.
You could repeat about the last.
Okay, yeah. The last portion was simply that, uh, uh. Uh, because of our, uh, our front setback and respecting that, not wanting to put in addition to have any blockage of, uh. Neighbor, neighborhood views, uh, neighboring views, uh, that brought us into the rear portion. And in the first floor, we're just adding a, a certain amount, uh, additional amount for the, uh. Living room to expand for, uh, kids to play, grandkids, that type of thing. And then also, uh, we're putting a second story on, which gives us an additional bedroom. And we're actually putting an additional bath on that second floor. So, uh, basically, uh, letting the house mature, uh, you know, for, uh, you know, more, more of that type of purpose. Uh, so then it brought us to the rear yard. Um, we looked at, uh, what would be feasibly. What would accommodate space, uh, without being too intrusive, uh, on the, on the rear lot. Um, and I think Daphne, uh, at some point. Um, and I think Daphne uh at some point, you might have that picture that we were looking at too. So basically, uh, one of the uh. One of the nice aspects too of the rear yard is that there is no and there will be no building. Uh directly adjacent on the on the uh property behind us, so we pretty much have an open. Visual between the two properties, uh which would not accommodate another structure, uh so. We're not kind of uh pushing up against another another property. We are not extending the addition beyond the current side yard, uh but because of the fact that side yard was. Um, uh because of the house position was non-compliant, we had to have a minimal side yard variance, but. The primary variance that we're requesting is seven feet on the rear. Uh, we're twelve uh over twelve feet back uh from the front setback, so we're closer to thirty-two. To thirty-four in the front, which obviously isn't, you know, isn't what we're requesting. But to get an addition on the back, we do have to uh request in uh. A seven-foot uh setback uh variance from the thirty-foot. Did that come across clear? So I know uh I know Denise who's who's here is uh talked to neighbors, it's one of the things we. We always uh recommend certainly, uh and um been very favorable. Uh in that respect also, and the the neighbors are appreciative of the fact that we're not pushing forward to that twenty-foot on the front, so. We're we're trying to develop a a design here that that's appropriate for the house and for the neighborhood. So that uh that's kind of my story at this point, our story.
And just out of curiosity, Ed, how 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 many houses back are you from the lake? Approximately.
Better, I think we're about four.
Okay.
I think we have four. Five back.
I I was looking, I'm looking at a Google map, so according to lane one, I'm trying to count the whole lot of trees.
Yeah, there are.
We're seven, we're seven lots back.
Yeah, it looks like.
We're seven, okay, sorry. I was missing it. I go I go down to the towards the lake to turn around because the lane is so narrow, but uh. Yeah, but yes, that is uh that is correct, uh obviously. I thought we were a little closer, but we're we're back a ways.
Now, we we as a board have been through this before on Waconia with the view and everything.
Yes, thank you.
Mark, I just want to just point out one thing in the literature package. And this is why I was having a hard time finding it, it was listed as three, one, nine, five, Waconia Lane. If you go up a few pages, just to make sure that we get that addressed. Up, down, one, up, one more, there you go, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Looking for it there and I couldn't, I couldn't.
I'm sorry, folks, that must have been. I'm dyslexic, so that may have been one of the issues. Three oh one five, I think I did that before too, sorry.
Okay.
But the ad the agenda is properly noticed in the hearing notice, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, definitely made sure we were both Mark and Daphne made sure we were on the on the right page there.
The problem is this is on Middleton Beach, no, just kidding. Um regarding other testimony, we received uh a phone call from, where did I put my notes now? We received a statement, a phone, a phone call in support from Sharon Grayson, twenty-nine fifteen Waconia Lane.
Do we have any other individuals on the call that would like to speak regarding this variance?
I would.
Could you state your name, please?
Sure, Jesse Schinaman, um I live at thirty nineteen Waconia Lane, uh that's my house on the drawing there right next to her. Um, so I I am very appreciative that she's taken a lot of consideration into um the lake view. And and not going forward, um I I do have some lake view. Um, in the summertime, you know, there's more leaves in front of it, but as in spring and fall, it's nice to watch ice and ice out, I can see that. Clearly from my bedroom and and even off my front patio above the uh garage there, so I'm having her stay back i- is is really nice for me. Um, and another thing that helps out as well, it kind of hits hits me in two spots. Um in between our houses too, gives us an opportunity to collaborate on the landscaping, uh which is really nice. Um, I kind of sit in a funny spot where the water wraps around, I'm kind of at the low point from every direction. Um, and while I survived the the great flood of twenty eighteen without getting too wet, um I did get water in in the garage. So where it kind of slows down, uh wraps around my house a little bit. Um, and and we've discussed a plan to work together to to regrade a little bit to help me out with uh water coming into my garage. Uh even without the rain as big as twenty eighteen, I I still get some on on heavy rain days, so I'm appreciative. I appreciate that as well, um so I think uh certainly support her plan and uh hope it gets approved.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else on the call?
Yeah, my name is Andy Enman, I'm the president of Coney Park Neighborhood Association and um. Wanted to just offer a couple of comments. Uh first, um I would like to reinforce something Ed mentioned. In that they have approached this in a in a very thoughtful and collaborative manner with the neighborhood. Uh Denise actually staked out the uh. Uh, the addition that she's proposing here in front of you and invited the entire neighborhood to come take a look. Um, she and I walked through it. Um, and uh, you know, it was very clear what what the extent of the improvements will be. Um, to my knowledge. To my knowledge, I don't think Denise has received any negative feedback uh from anyone, she did send a plan out to everyone. Uh prior to uh requesting the variance. Uh, we did meet as a board last week and uh just reviewed any. Comments uh from our uh Neighborhood Association Board. Uh, there were no obje- objections whatsoever, so as a board. Uh, we, you know, we have no objection to what Denise is proposing. And and the last thing I will comment on is is Ed mentioned and and I think Jesse mentioned as well. Uh, our street is unique in the uh uh narrowness of the lane and uh the the. Small lots, and I think what she has put together with with Ed here is. Uh, very appropriate in scale and mass and and due to some of the limitations on both sides. Uh, as well as a desire not to further encroach in that front yard. Um, setback as as Jesse and and Ed had both talked about, I think it's very appropriate to. Um, what they plan to expand towards the rear, so. Uh, if anyone has any questions, I can answer any, but we we certainly have no objections.
Does anybody on the board have any other comments, questions for anyone on the meeting?
None from me.
Okay.
You talk about what's what what looks like a maybe a. Is it the front, I'm just trying to read the drawings here. On the yard side elevation, looks like maybe a lean to or. Uh, on the left-hand side.
Looks like the yard side is actually the rear elevation. Is that right, Ed?
That is correct.
It's the shed on the left.
What what we're seeing is the uh uh the patio which has a covered roof on it, so it's an open.
Okay, so that's the patio, okay.
It's an open patio, yep. Sorry, I didn't note that specifically, but that indeed is what it is.
So, uh just to talk a little bit further on it. So one of the other things I'm doing internally is to uh redoing the kitchen, so there's, you know, there's some work that's being done inside. Uh, so it will be all recided, there'll be a new roof and I I plan to do uh some extensive landscaping also. And so part of that, there is a fence between Jesse and I, and so I don't know if you can tell that, so what I'm going to do is take that fence down. Um, for a time being so that he can, so we both can properly grade our yards and uh, you know, put the proper pitch to it. And then put the fence, you know, put the fence back up, so. It it's hard to get, uh, you know. To do much landscaping with these yards when there's such little space in between the houses, so.
Just out of curiosity, are you using the same uh landscaping company to do that between your houses, okay?
Yeah, we will, we've been, landscapers are a little difficult to come by right now, but uh that's our agreement.
Are there other questions for uh? Anybody else regarding this application, if not, we could uh. Close the public portion and discuss as a board.
Well, I have a, I have something to bring up, Paul.
Okay.
We're we're looking, once again, when I look at the elevations, we're looking at a preliminary. And my concern is. My my concern is, once again, as we okay a plan as a board, if it changes in any way. And I'm not sure how, you know, to what minute detail we're talking about, but if it changes. Then then our approval is null and void, so if let's say a roof pitch changed or a window location.
I I wouldn't. Uh, my comment to that, if I may, Paul. In this case, there's height isn't an issue, but height is an issue as it relates to. Um, the mass of the building and and the encroachment into the setbacks. Um, so I'm sorry, I said that both ways and I didn't mean it that way. What I meant is if there's alterations to a structure that do not extend an encroachment. From what's shown in the plan, then I don't see any problem with a plan changing as long as it's not increasing an encroachment. So. Um, does that make sense? So so in other words, what was noticed is a cer- a structure of a certain mass. But if they're going to change the the, you know, reduce the roof area, um, you know, windows, I don't think are really a a big. Well. I think there's flexibility with making some some cosmetic changes to a building, but the structure, the mass of it, you know, the size of it. Those are are things that if they're less than what the variance is requested, then that's fine, but if it's if it increases it, then that's a problem.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, you're saying because she, yeah, she's not asking for a height variance, she's.
Well, well, but a variance still, a a structure like this still, for example, if she got an application, if her application was for a one-story addition. And into the rear yard and it's noticed that way, but then she puts a second story on it, you know, that's a problem. We wouldn't allow, I wouldn't allow that, but if she's showing something as a two-story addition and it's it's, you know, everyone knows the neighbor, obviously Jesse. The neighbor knows it's a two-story addition, um, you know, if it's something that's that's. You know, that I determined to be comparable to what was noticed and it doesn't extend an encroachment. I did that at the bottom of the hill on Waconia uh as well, so there was a, there was some modifications to the plan. And I looked at it very carefully and decided that the overall effect of it was not to change any. You know, and encroach any further into a sightline that that a neighbor might have. So so I I would say the rule isn't as rigid as as Mark was suggesting, you know, I think as long as the encroachment isn't as. As long as there's not a more a greater encroachment than what was indicated in the application materials, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and I agree with that, uh my other question though is when you notice this to the public, you show them a plan. And we've been through this before, haven't we, Mark, so tell, address that. I I'm I'm thinking we're fine here because it'll probably end up looking like this, but.
Right.
I'm just saying we're in the same situation we were last time with with a kind of a a preliminary plan.
Yeah, there's not a lot of detail as far as dimensions go and, you know. Using this technique with, you know, pen or paper on or or pencil on paper. Um, you know, the the thickness of a line might be a couple inches, so I I get Mark's point and, you know, are they. It looks like they're, you know, still within the initial footprint, but I don't see any dimensions actually indicating that. Um, just, it would, it would have been nice to have a little more. Um, a plan that was a little further along or a little maybe presented in a. More solid way, I guess.
Ki- are are we able to comment together or not?
Yeah, we're.
So basically, it is, it is a bit of the chicken and egg, right? So if the variance was not allowed or was modified, uh that would have some major effect on the interior. So basically, what we were showing you is indeed the per- the uh full extent. That we are impeding into the zoning, okay, so that that will obviously be kept because it's an official. Uh, record, if you know what I mean. Window placement, I mean, I can also promise, I mean, some of some of you know know of our work a little bit and. But I I can also promise that what we are showing is is indeed the reality of it. Uh, we we do a more thorough concept plan than many wo- would do. Uh, and I'm not, I'm not, you know, you know, uh tooting my own horn here. But especially when it comes to variances and setbacks, we absolutely honor that because. We have to live up to what we promise and uh we've worked with Mark in that regard and. Uh, we've gotten even down to inches with him in a couple of cases and I've honored that, so. Um, I can promise you uh uh that will be indeed, what we're showing. Will be the actuality of what it actually occurs. And my concept work is more to scale than many concepts, it's just not a sketch. So, uh not to reassure or to, you know, say I'm the greatest, but uh I just wanted to to let you know about the integrity that. You know, that's the both the both the owner and 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 I've been able to create together.
This is Ed who again?
Linville.
I'm just kidding.
I'm a eight, I'm famous from here to Stoughton, so you guys should know me.
Are there uh uh other questions for the applicants or others on the call? If there isn't, I think we could close the public portion at six oh eight and discuss as a board.
I'll start by saying I appreciate the effort that went in sort of before coming to this meeting with. Uh, meeting with the neighbors, having the architect here to explain the design and the hardship. Having the Neighborhood Association President here to represent a larger body, I think that's all wonderful. And from where I'm sitting, my opinion right now, looking at this is the hardship is basically created. Because the building is set back from the front yard, set back more than it needed to be and they're not asking for a lot. It seems very reasonable.
Yeah, and I like the fact that the additions are not any wider than the existing house. So they're not going any closer to the side yards. And, you know, I don't want you, I don't want to be misunderstood here, I'm just trying to make sure that all the. The uh I's are dotted and the T's are crossed here when it comes to uh applications and notifications and things like that. So that we don't, we don't run into a technicality where someone says, well, I look, I saw this looks different than the one I looked at.
Right, absolutely.
Or else I would have been to the, you know, gone on the meeting and just said something, you know. And I know, and I know Ed Ed Linville's work, he does a good job, he's an honest guy, so.
Well, and as Mark's, as Mark pointed out before, this is, you know, the setback from the lot line. Uh, you know, they're not asking for a height variance like the previous applicants, so. I I feel comfortable with what they're asking for here as well.
Well, I would suggest based on all of your comments that we make a motion to approve the variance.
I'm in second.
All right, so John is uh. Making a motion, Bob, you made a second? The hardship, we have to discuss that.
Hardship.
I think the hardship was growing in place.
Yep.
Growing in place and location of existing, of existing.
Well, I think it's also that front yard setback, which also is a hardship, but it's also a blessing because, you know, we don't have the same issue that we had with other residences where they're adding on to the front. So actually, the front yard location is, you know, I think that helps in this case.
So we're talking aging in place and location of the existing structure on the lot.
Yes.
Yep. So it's been. It's been a seconded?
Well, it's been, I'm waiting for Mark to get caught up before we take a vote.
Okay, I'm good.
Oh, you're good? Okay, so there was a motion in a second. Do we all in favor?
I.
All right. Motion, motion carries. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
And thank you for the process. I want a second Bob's comment. I appreciate that very much.
Here, so.
And I would just note that the neighboring house is the house that caused some issues with process a number of years ago. The Jesse is laughing because he knows what I'm referring to, apparently, but.
Okay, the neighboring house, meaning the one to the south?
To the north.
The one Jesse's in?
Yes, that was sold to Jesse, I.
So Jesse is the owner that bought it from Adley, okay.
Right.
So yes, this process went a lot better. And I know Denise was familiar with that process as well. So it's nice to see that there's neighborly relations here and, and just my little editorial comment for the night, so.
Yeah, I would agree. Thank you, Mark. If there's no other information that we need to discuss tonight, I'd like to, someone make a motion to adjourn.
I just wanted to circle back, just, Mark, did you ever find anything about like required drawings? Mark Opitz, I know you started looking.
No, um, there wasn't any specific language. I, I didn't look at our application form itself, but you definitely have the right to ask for any documentation that you need to make your decision. I mean, I, you know, that's just a general principle. I didn't read every word, but I can tell you that, that it's perfectly reasonable to ask for additional supporting information if you need it. And I think we request, pardon me?
And we are basically, we leave it up to you guys in the zoning department. When you take in the information to look at it and say, look, this is not enough.
Yeah.
And we've done that in the past.
We could have in this case, and I think we need to, you know, we'll look at that more rigorously in the future. I, you know, I think it's something, I, I was also uncomfortable that we shouldn't go back and talk about any specific application, though. I'll just say that we, that we will. Yeah, in general, we do. You know, we will let somebody know if we think they need more information. And sometimes it's a judgment call and, and, you know. And then the chicken and egg that Ed was talking about, you know, it's one of those things where how far do you go with something if you don't know if you're going to get approved? You know, before you invest a lot of resources. So, you know, I think it's certainly appropriate to defer applications on matters if you need more information. And that's what you did tonight.
Okay.
So.
Just, just as a citizen, I would like to thank both Mark and Daphne. You know, you, you've been great to work with. When I needed information, you got it to me. I just want to, to appreciate both of you in that regard.
So who is motioning to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, well, as the chair, motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
All right.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.